Okay, I will call the February Board Meeting of the Port Edwards Village Board to order. And I will at 7:01 I had and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Okay, Trustee Duncan?
Here.
Trustee Grunden?
Here.
Trustee Mansell?
Here.
Trustee Martinson, or I'm sorry, um, Trustee Bingham?
President.
Trustee Mitchell?
Here.
And Trustee Saylor.
Good. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance if you've been standing for a brief moment of silence. Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Okay, without objection, I would like to make a motion or I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous board meeting, the January fourteenth, twenty twenty Committee of the Whole meeting and the February third, twenty twenty Committee of the Whole Training Session. Do I have a second? Motion by the Vice President, second by Chairman Mitchell. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We don't have any public excuse. I mean, you know what I mean, Todd. Uh, do you want to make a comment on anything?
No, sir.
I really don't have much for President's report, so I will go right into the Committees and Commission reports. And on the Airport Commission, outside of getting the minutes via email, I don't know what's really going on out there. So I gotta get off. Could be lazy on Thursday mornings and get on over there again. I would encourage all of you to make a trip out there on occasion. They moved it from four o'clock in the afternoon on Thursday to eight a.m. now, so, um, to make, uh, Katie Martinson had trouble because of her work, so it's better for her in the morning. So it's different going to meetings that early. Kind of like defending Roger Stone. Is that what you're gonna do, defend him or?
No, prosecute.
Oh, prosecute.
Everybody else stepped aside, so.
Okay, moving on. Uh, we will go to the Police and Fire Commission and Vice Chair Blum.
Good evening. Just to let you know, we had a special meeting on January twenty eighth, five thirty P.M. because we received a letter of, we consider a letter of concern, but it came as an informal complaint from someone within the fire department. So we went into closed session. We had two items in closed session. One was to talk about part-time officers in the police department. The letter was nine paragraphs. We went through paragraph by paragraph. And pretty much what happened is we, we labeled it a letter of concern because there were allegations contained in the letter against the fire chief, but again, none of the allegations fit the criteria of the responsibilities given to the Police and Fire Commission. So we answered the letter. We answered the person who wrote the letter. We gave, we answered Chief Arndt, and we sent a letter to our village administrator. And, and that's where that particular complaint has ended up now. It may, there are some vegetarian items that they were concerned about. So again, that's not Police and Fire Commission. There were some police or fire management, uh, things that did not pertain to the Police and Fire Commission. So we forwarded this letter and our interpretations, we went of each paragraph of the letter.
Okay, uh, would you maybe just get, or Dwayne, explain why something like, like that complaint belongs with the village administrator?
Okay, because the Police and Fire Commission does not have optional powers, which is afforded to us in certain parts of the, uh, state statutes. But the powers we have now is to hire fire and, and take care of disciplinary things that are in, in violation of a state statute or a village ordinance or something like that. That's about the only criteria we have as a Police and Fire Commission. And the main purpose is hiring firing promotions so far.
Anything, Dwayne, you want to add?
Yeah, what I'd like to add is that when I seen the, the PFC's report, all the issues that were brought forth were considered more of a management and day-to-day operational process concerns. So I'll have that in my report when it comes to it. Okay, thank you.
Uh, we also discussed, uh, part-time police officers for the police department, myself and Chief Drew interviewed Joseph Zerfu, Jr., for a position he is willing, with all of his experience, to work part-time for us in the village. We then approved him to be hired as a part-time officer, depending the completion of a background investigation by our police chief. Those are the only two items on the agenda. And our next meeting will be March second at five thirty. We've moved it up to a bit earlier time for several of us our age than on the committee. So we have it at five thirty and we're gonna have it in the committee room in the dealer center. Any other questions or questions about this? Feel free to contact me or.
Thank you, Vice Chair Blum.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Okay, um, we're gonna move into the Streets and Infrastructure Recreation Cemetery Committee. Madam Chair, after your comments, um, I've given the village administrator has a question to, or a statement to make reference your motion. So after your, your comments, if it's okay with you, I'd like to have him sort of speak his piece. Something has, has come up with that motion. So, see you, Todd. Thank you.
Okay, um, our last meeting was held on January twenty first. Um, I had made some brief comments about looking towards the future of the, of the village and how we're going to accommodate and appeal to all life ages. So, um, we had a fair amount of discussion recommending, um, and looking at different professional engineering services for the twenty twenty infrastructure projects, which sounds like Dwayne has some comments on that as well. Ben explained the projects that are coming up for twenty twenty. And we heard from some, a representative, Dan Horcart, from MSA, and also, um, there was a proposal from Jewel Engineering as well. And with that?
I want, I want to apologize for bringing this issue up at this time. It would be actually the subject of the committee discussion. And I came back yesterday and I got a first time had a chance to look at the proposals that provided to the committee. And, um, I don't think there's gonna be nothing wrong with your motion, trying to, but I'd like to explain that there is differences between the two proposals. I wondered if you had a chance, did you have that discussion in committee, how different proposals they were?
We did.
You did. So, one is more extensive than the other one.
And we discussed that.
And some of the things that, some of the cost items are going, are not, the cost of freaking drawing documents and bidding the construction are not part of the Jewel agreement, which is part of the other. So what I'm, what I'm saying is I don't think there's no problem, but I want you to realize as the committee and the council before they make the vote, is that the cost that's been provided in this proposal will be higher than what you're gonna see in this proposal based on things that need to be done on this, on this specific project. And another wrong with the proposals, another wrong was put together. But so, the procedure is that you usually draft a proposal from the staff's side showing what you're looking for. And you have documents, so both, all parties get this chance to see what they're proposing on. Um, and based on this process, it was done verbally. We didn't have any written document. I have found, since I've been back, there's, you know, documents that we have in staff that we provide to propose, uh, engineers or other folks that are professionally local services. And you kind of spell them out first, so when you get a proposal back, you're talking about apples for apples.
Are you recommending?
I'm not changing your reputation whatsoever, but I want you to be aware as the committee chairman chair and also when the board votes on that, the, the cost amount that you see in the proposal will not be that low. It's gonna, it, the big difference is that in the MSA proposal, they were doing profile design for the street and paving, et cetera, for the alley. And the other one does not. And the conclusion is that we will not see that design will be, that has to be done by staff in the field. You wanna have those, those grades and those profiles provided by the engineer. And that's a big difference in, in the field work when it comes to the actual construction and infield, infield inspection. Those will be done, have to be done or done by, but it's an alley, which I'm not too concerned about because I've done designs in alleys. You gotta match so much. It's very hard to do those profiles with the alley portion. So I just want you to be aware, that's gonna be a very, even though it's a small sewer and water project, getting the grade and matching the alley elevations is very pertinent, very important because you're playing with people's fragilities. That's what I've been there. So that's a big difference. You will not have that type of profile on between the two. If we wanted that, if the committee wanted this, any, village, excuse me, village wanted that, I think you'd see a different price to Joe's proposal game. So that's a big difference.
Okay.
I don't.
So you're recommending next time that we have more of an alley staff?
Most definitely. And, and you have in the past, past administrators have done that process in place. And if I was here with it, and for I wasn't for those three weeks, I would have worked with Ben and got that in place.
And I'm assuming you've had conversation with Ben?
No, I just got these this afternoon, uh, late before the, I just got, I just got a chance from him. I got him today late. And I apologized. I said, nothing against Ben. I'm gonna check, but I want you to know that.
We did acknowledge all of that and discuss that. And I think, and I don't know that I can speak for Ben. I think you probably need to have a one.
Oh, no, Ben and I fine with, I'll be fine with Ben. I just want you to be, to be aware of that. I think he must have been aware of that.
We knew, yeah, we knew there was a difference.
And I apologize during the committee.
We were going local as opposed to MSA.
No problem.
We felt.
But as, as cost-wise, I want you to prepare it as a, excuse me, the board, if you will see.
There'll be more.
And we may need, need, want to talk with Ben and see how, how important it is to have those grades for those profile, the design for asphalt, so.
Okay.
Chair.
I apologize for not, if I wasn't here, I wouldn't have that discussion with you.
Yeah, I know.
Jim?
Sure, those were the only two bits?
Yes.
Okay, and if that went out to engineering firms, hopefully, I don't worry.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll put that on the agenda too for next. You don't think so?
I don't know. I think we're gonna go with it, is that I know that I'll work with Ben and staff when we get this design that we know, we make sure we know what we're getting. And when we're in a field, field inspection is very important. I'm not, I just, we're different.
Go ahead, Jim.
Is that, is, that's for all twenty twenty projects, Jewel?
It's just for that alley.
It's just.
See, I heard that, but then I see it says for twenty twenty projects.
That's called a taker? That's called a taker here? Correct me?
Okay, so the proposal, so, excuse me. I guess, yeah, I heard alley, then I heard, I read twenty twenty. So we're, we're just talking about that one alley.
Projects.
Two alleys, that project. Okay.
The alley.
So long as that's clarified in, in the motion, I'm fine with that.
We still have MSA using, or we're still utilizing MSA for that, uh, that like sink hole over by Ripple Creek under bunker that's kind of, there's some engineering or something that we talked about possibly doing. I mean, MSA's still got some work in the village.
Yes.
It's just that this proposal, MSA's proposal was about fifty percent more than.
Yes.
Actually, from a village standpoint, this is good practice, that you look at different consultants. You don't have to have the same one working for you.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you for giving the chance.
Okay, we ready for the motion, Mr. President? Okay. I will move then that we accept the proposal from Jewel Engineering for the twenty twenty alley project, projects, project.
Do I have a second as the motion was read by the chair?
Second.
Second by the Vice President. Um, and the acceptance of the Jewel proposal for these projects, discussion. Hearing no requests to speak, all those in favor, the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, continuing with our meeting, we also had a discussion about using precision, grading and utilities incorporated again. We, and that was an, an extensive conversation between some people in the audience and the committee. And we have decided to end with our attorney, Nick Epps, as well. And we have decided to go forward using him, you all use, I shouldn't say him, but using that company, um, in emergency projects, probably only whenever we really need somebody that can answer a call quickly. And we probably will not, don't plan to anyway, uh, use them for other bigger projects at the present time, unless we get, um, the paperwork that's needed from a way past history project, yeah, that had never been turned in. So that was pretty much the discussion. We didn't take any formal action or anything on that. Um, we also had discussion about having, oh, I'm sorry.
So why would we even use said company for emergencies? That mean nobody, obviously nobody else is available to do it?
It means, it means that our Public Works person is comfortable with him in emergencies because he has answered in the, he has come forward in the past to, and he comes forward with parts that are needed to do repairs that he has in his inventory, which not all, apparently not all surrounding. And there's still disagreement about that, but that's, um, that's probably, that's where Ben was coming.
If I was said company, I might not want to do emergency work, but evidently.
Well, he has. I don't know about the future.
Okay, just asking a question.
Yeah. And, and if he says no, then we, you know, obviously Ben will go to other resources.
Okay, thank you.
To handle an emergency.
Seems to me that if you make an apple pie and one of the apples is rotten, the whole pie tends to be.
Are you saying all, all engineering company or all?
No, what I'm saying is, is if, if one aspect of this has been a problem, I can't imagine any aspect of it's going to be up on the board.
Well, and apparently, and I haven't been here to experience that. It sounds like when there had, there has been at least one emergency situation, a broken water main, I think it was.
It was.
Um, it was hand, pardon me?
I'm sorry, for interrupting him, it was last winter. And Ben called me on that as he was going down. He said, what do I, who was, he wanted to get a hold of Mark. He said, emergency situation. That's how it started, John.
Okay, thank you.
And as far as I know, that was handled okay.
That's my understanding.
You know, the other previous incident was a much larger project and a much larger, there were much larger mistakes made, let's put it that way. So that's where that stands at the present time, which is kind of blurry, I know.
I tend to agree with, uh, Trustee Duncan on, on this one. It makes me a little nervous, but, uh, I trust in making those decisions in the best interest of the village.
And he is a local person, so he has a little bit of a, little bit of skin in the game, maybe. You know, I can't.
Yeah.
Not enough apparently to give us what we want?
I don't know. I, I, yeah, not gonna go there.
Okay.
Um, okay, moving on. Unless there are other comments or questions. We also had a discussion about inspection services for twenty twenty. We're still struggling with that. Rapids apparently only has one right now, and that's who we depend on. So the supply is pretty limited. It is going to be on our agenda again for the next meeting. So that was just kind of an update. Um, we also had an update on well, five, which you've probably all heard about before. We need about forty, about forty-five thousand dollars worth of new filters on that. And, um, looking forward to doing that in June and June or July sometime this summer. So I think that was probably pretty much, um, our Public Works person will be coming forward at our next meeting in March now with some more projects for twenty twenty. So that's pretty much our meeting in January.
Any questions for Chairman Mitchell? Just a smile, John, if this is.
No, I'm just, I don't worry.
Okay, Chairman Bingham, Pit Committee.
Uh, okay. Uh, basically discussion. Uh, so, uh, items of discussion, and we're moving ahead with, uh, the, any possible zoning violations at two forty-one, two fifty-one market. Uh, part of that has been voluntarily resolved, to my knowledge. I just read an email from our attorney that additional action will be taken as far as fire and police inspection upon, and if the owner of said property does not comply, a, um, what's the word I'm looking for, Dana?
Citation.
subpoena, subpoena or something. Is it a subpoena will be issued to get, we're coming in.
Warrant.
Warrant, thank you. Nick, Nick said it. I, thank you. Uh, I missed that class in law school. Uh, so I, as far as I'm concerned, at this point, it's moving along at, maybe not a fast pace, but it's moving along. I know Dwayne will be involved in that process also. Uh, talked about, uh, actually spent some time talking about reservation cost for this particular facility. Uh, committee agreed that, uh, and this will appear on the next board meeting, to basically go with the same as the Alexander enclosed shelter, uh, same fees and same deposits because that, uh, if I understand correctly, and Kim, if you would correct me.
Diane.
Uh, Kim.
Diane.
Diane, Diane, Kim handles those reservations. I was thinking Kim, and I didn't want to exclude you if you handle any of that. So try to keep that in a more organized way if we're gonna add this facility. Uh, talked about a number of different things and actually arrived at that. So that will be coming to the board. Um, I see something on the Wi-Fi. I think Eric or Solaris or somebody has taken care of that. That's in front of, that's with each trustee information. Uh, and also any regard, in regard to another item, in regard to a business license for businesses in the village. Actually, I was pleased to see that, uh, Ben Martinson is gonna engage the interest at the next Business Council meeting. And I think the committee kind of, I know I felt that that's where it should be. Business Council should look, take a look at if, you know, if we're gonna charge to register a business or that type of thing. I, I don't want to just put a fee out there just for the sake of a fee. Uh, but if we can get some directory of businesses in the village, we have kind of a handle on that. Spend some time identifying what is a business in the village. Some businesses are, are out of people's homes. Is that a business we wanna get a list of? Uh, kind of talking, and I don't want to use the word storefront, but I will, storefront type businesses. Uh, is that, that's kind of what we talked about. Is that kind of how you remember it, Eric? So we're, we're just kind of on hold. Uh, we're gonna take another look at that, uh, the next meeting, Betsy, so that'll come up at your, uh, February twenty eighth meeting. So, yeah, it was some good discussion provided, documents provided by Diane and, and Kim and Ben and then contributed to the discussion. So we really didn't, don't have any motions for the board at this time.
Okay, Jim, before you go on, Dwayne, you wanted to ask the chairman?
Yes, I would like to, you know, I, I don't, things have occurred maybe that John's unaware of. You do have an ordinance in place already that identifies the business that John's talking to about. That may occur maybe when John was not on, on the board. The item that was recommended by staff to be brought forth in front of the pit committee was actually, one thing was missing was setting the fee, and that's all that's left. So, um, if, 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 you know, basically the discussion was left, it was supposed to be just a fee set. Is it gonna be, the ordinance is in place and it's nothing against the committee's discussion.
Oh, oh, that's fine.
And I'm not trying to do that again. I just want to know the, let's know where you're at. Your council, the village board already must have passed that. And all staff was trying to do is establish the fee that, and an application for the process. So I can see.
Yeah, no, thank you. I actually knew that. I think Diane brought that to our attention. And she, that's why it got on the pit agenda. And then we were talking about the whole concept. But it had already been approved, I think, prior to this board.
Yeah, the form hasn't been loaded. The ordinance says that the board has to through the form also.
That's it. Yeah, we did have a copy of the form. Diane had.
Just look it up.
And, um, so, you know, I, I still feel comfortable in it going to get the feedback from the Business Council, those are the members, and see what Ben comes back with at that next meeting. And, and that's all I have. Thank you, Dwayne.
Okay, any questions for the chairman? Okay, Chairman Grunden. Correction, that was so sixties. Chairperson Grunden.
Public Safety, MAB, February fourth. Um, we have nothing significant on our agenda. The items to note would be, um, on the board agenda for next month, we're gonna get on there to have three firefighters sworn in. And then the other item of significance is a letter received from Chuck Lamb on his retirement. And that will be effective March first. So other than that, our next meeting is not March third, it's March fourth at five o'clock, which typically it would be March third.
Move that to Wednesday?
It'll be March fourth.
Fourth. It's on a Wednesday?
Yeah.
Certain person can do it on that day?
What certain person?
Chief?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were.
Oh, that's.
For him.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chairman Mitchell again, Finance and Human Resources.
Okay, um, no particular comments to make, so I'll move into the first motion, which is I move to approve the payment of the bills.
Second.
Motion by Chairman Mitchell, second by Trustee Grunden to approve payment of the bills, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next motion, I move to approve the journal entries of the previous month.
So move.
Okay, motion by Chairman Mitchell, second by Trustee Bingham to approve the journal entries for the previous month, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and after some fairly significant discussion, um, we ended up with the motion that's under number four. So I moved to place the net proceeds from the sale of the land to Brunner Timber Products into an account to be used to blacktop, um, the Sixth Street, to do the rest of the blacktopping in the Sixth Street Development Project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Chairman Mitchell, second by Trustee Bingham to place the net proceeds of the sale of the land to Brunner Timber Products Incorporated into an account to be used for blacktop for the Sixth Street Development Project, discussion.
I was just gonna say, and the rationale for that was the money's coming from the sale of that property and therefore to invest it specifically again back in the project that's a part of that on the village side. We thought that was a good use of the, would be a good use of the money.
And do you want to say something about the administrative costs? It's not gonna be the forty-two thousand or whatever. It'll be somewhat less due to.
Oh, yeah, really. And we didn't have, we didn't put an amount in there.
Well, we didn't.
We didn't know. The gross amount, I think, was forty-two five.
Something.
And after the attorney. And after the attorney fees and all the required fees are paid, it's going to be less than that. So whatever that net proceed is, we will use that then for the blacktopping.
So basically, that's just going back to the general fund? Because we've already budgeted for the blacktop and all that other stuff.
I talked to the auditor and it'll go into the general fund. And if we don't get to it this year, it'll be noted as committed fund for next year.
But then Dana, didn't you want it in something different for?
I wanted it to 400 projects or funds so that we had money available for future development of property or investments. You know, if we had another business wanting to come in, we had money available to do curb and gutter or to fix a street or whatever, so that we wouldn't have to necessarily be taking it out of the general fund.
So we felt like this is development, you know, at a very specific place and.
Was this already budgeted though in that project when we first did it? We were just going to do gravel?
Mm-hmm.
Is that originally what it was going to be on the roundabout and?
And we figured, I mean, in the discussion, when we were discussing, we figured that that would develop that piece of property more so that it appears to be more attractive to a developer in the future. You know, to have that already, you know, it's kind of an investment in the future.
What's it develop? The biggest chunk is going to Brunner's.
Right.
And so what's left to develop? The one, the one piece that we're getting back?
On the east side of Sixth Street.
I don't think there's a couple, one or two lots that's still to be developed.
Any other discussion? Okay, we had a mission. Motion by Chairman Mitchell, second by trustee Bigum to place the net proceeds of the land sale to Brunner's into an account to be used for blacktop for the Sixth Street Development Project. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And that would be five yea and one nay. Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to the next topic of discussion in this particular meeting. We decided to approve and we are putting a motion forward. So I move to offer the cleaning services to advance janitorial at the cost of $179.85 per month, per their quote.
So, ahead. Motion by Chairman Mitchell, second by trustee Bigum.
Chair.
To offer the cleaning services to advance janitorial at a cost of $179.85 per month, per their quote, discussion. Go ahead, Dwayne.
I have no problem with this, but I, but I want to, and I wasn't here and it's hard to do these quotes sometimes. I had, I did, by three emails when I was out of town, I could see that different people provided services required. Wasn't the same person doing the process. So then again, the vendors are not hearing the same word in this case. So in the future, we always should try to work on having the same person or the documents being put out what you're looking for. So everyone understands they're on the same page. And I, I think that did occur this, but don't get me wrong. I asked them to go out and get proposals, so it's, it's fine what we have. I'm just, I would have discussion again at that committee.
It was unfortunate and Ben commented on that also. I think he was not available the second time when someone was taken through. We did have two proposals that we considered. The other one actually was about twice what this one is. However, that one was in much more detail, again, which you've probably seen too, Dwayne. However, we went with this one, I'd say because they do have a reputation and they have done work in the village and so.
Any further discussion?
The concern I had with it was the apples to oranges comparison. And I don't frankly see how the other company can, the company that the committee voted to approve. I don't see how it's possible to get that level of cleaning for $45 a time in all the buildings. So that's why I voted no. That's why I'll vote no today.
Any other discussion? Okay, the motion by Chairman Mitchell, second by trustee Bigum to offer the cleaning services to advance janitorial at a cost of $179.85 per month, as is their quote. Those in favor of that motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, that passes 4-2. Okay, thank you, Sue. Oh, we got one more. I'm sorry.
I have one more. Let me comment on two other things before, and before I go on to the last motion. Ben talked about summer help for Public Works. And his plan is to interview candidates. He wants to advertise at the high school and he plans to interview them. And specifically, I think, to make them aware, any candidates aware of what the job requires and what, you know, that they could be on the back of the leak sucker. They could be, you know, all the different things that they could be doing because I think he's felt maybe in the past that some have not been aware and they've been a little bit, I shouldn't say shocked, but they've been surprised. Let me put it that way.
Do you mind if I heat exhausted?
Yeah, exactly, and not realizing what they're applying for. So he wants to make that very clear. The other large portion of our meeting entailed a telephone call from Chris Schwartz from Public Administration's Associates. And we went through kind of all of the things that we've already okayed. The board has already okayed, but making sure that we were in sync with him with the description for the administrator's job and the timeline and all of the details. So that was like each part.
Probably the best telephone conference I had been on. That was 18 minutes well spent.
Is that all it was? I didn't realize. I don't think the link. Okay, so moving on from there, I'm moving to purchase a printer for this center, for the Marshall Beeler Center.
Second.
Motion by Chairman Mitchell, second by trustee Grunden to purchase a printer for the Marshall Beeler Center, discussion? Yes, Betsy?
Is it a printer slash copier? So if we have something we want to make copies for, we don't have to go all the way around to?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll get, we'll get all the laptops so they can all remote into it.
And do we have a cost?
Not yet. Oh, sorry, Dwayne.
I hate what I'm doing is that I was not here and I feel like an armchair quarterback and I don't like doing this. I apologize. Wasn't at the meeting. Apparently, I'm wondering the reason behind it because if we want all copies, we can definitely make copies of the agenda and the, what do I say, all the pertinent information. Unless you're looking for something up in your meeting where it requires, you're Googling something or you have some questions on it and that's where you may want additional information, but I don't know if you had that discussion.
We did.
Right.
I'm sorry. We did, we did have that discussion. And I'll tell you when it came up because we didn't have some of the papers that we needed. I don't remember exactly.
It was a genetic taking like a minute, minute, you know.
Form.
I made sure staff had everything in front of you tonight.
You, you do have. And I think what we realized was, yes, we almost always have, somebody has their computer. I didn't bring mine tonight because I couldn't get in the other night. But sometimes there are some things that come up that we don't have in front of us that we need.
Well, and there's always the aspect of the internet goes down, which has happened the last couple of meetings. There hasn't been, and that could at any time, even once we get it all, the glitches worked out. If there's all of a sudden no internet, and when we were in the other building, we would be like, oh, this, let me share this and throw off some copies.
I know it's very much easier to do.
Yeah, so I think that it's not going to be certainly not a copier like is over there. Just something cheap enough to get ink on paper. I think we're thinking 50, $75 probably to whatever, bottom line.
Okay. Well, then I would move to an amendment that we limit the amount spent to $100. Because otherwise I can't support a blank check. So I'll make that a motion to amend. Which means that it has to have a second.
Second, correct. And I would like to chip in that to set it at 150. Because I was looking at somewhere with printers.
All right, that's fine. I don't.
Were well over $100.
Do you care, I mean, 150?
You, yeah, you're not going to need $150. I've got a printer at home for $79. It copies, it scans, it does the dishes, you know, they're, they're throwaway technology.
I don't want to, I have to do. The only difference is, is that sometimes spending a little more for a printer, the cartridges for the ink are cheaper.
Okay, we will, we will vote on the motion to amend. And if this passes, then we will vote on the amended motion, which will now have the $150 in it. Okay? Motion by the vice president, second by trustee Bigum to amend the motion that the price is not to exceed $150. All those in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then carries. Okay, so now back to the motion, Sue. We'll just plug in the $150 limit.
So you want me to do that again? Okay, all right. My move to purchase a printer for up to, not.
Not exceed?
Not to exceed, thank you. That's what I was looking for. To purchase a printer, not to exceed $150 for the Marshall Beeler Center.
Yes.
Okay, Chairman Mitchell, second by trustee Mansel to purchase a printer for the Marshall Beeler Center with the price not to exceed $150. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, Sue? Anything else?
No.
Okay, I just want to make one comment quickly on the, with summer help. You have one, Dana?
Yeah.
This is the past practice, like the, I remember Joe in Delano used to get together with the summer help and the board used to vote on this. Well, then before, well, were you on there? Then one year, the board just decided that this could be handled by the administrator and the public works supervisor. And so that's what now Ben and, well, in this case, Dwayne will be doing the choosing. And it really works out a heck of a lot better.
Okay, so we want to make sure that it's both Ben and the administrator that are making the.
The authority to sign off on anybody working for the village license committees.
The administrator anyway.
I just, the kids are not having any clue what Public Works Department does.
There were the kid that didn't know how to use a shovel.
Couldn't find a starter, couldn't?
Shovel.
Pretty much Dell gave him a shovel and he was like, I don't know what I'm supposed to do.
Okay. Where am I here? Any unfinished business from our last meeting? I have nothing. I have nothing for new business. Anybody have new business? Okay, report from our village officials. We'll start with the administrator, Mr. Gao.
Yeah, I passed out a report. Trying to do this, everything, I've been so busy with being coming back off three time. I actually need to do this for myself and also for, I think, for the county, for the village board. First part, the interim administrative schedule, I want to let you know the interim is planning to be reported as a normal basis for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And unless other matters are required to shift days, if the workload does not demand a three day a week, it'll be reduced accordingly. So I want you to understand that. We also, I think you heard, a village administrator announcement. That village announcement has been posted on several locations. And you can find the announcement on the village website. The other thing that was mentioned, the deadline is March 10th for the application to be. They will be submitted to Chris. He'll be the one that will receive those applications through that process. You know, what I was about to mention before, 241 Market Street, some property has been vacant for some time. The fire and building inspections will need to be conducted by landowner will be notified for future inspections. What Bigum brought up, we'll be bringing up the matter at the next pit committee meeting to consider a general engineering company providing proposal, proposal to conduct a building inspection at some property. And that's set up because if we have to go for, well, I want to be prepared with to go for a warrant in that court order. So I'm at least getting that proposal in front for next time around. The other one is the DMI team is working and getting authorization to conduct inspections for all the properties. That's just bringing you up to date, we're going on that. The Port Edwards Police and Fire Commission action, now you heard it, urge today that authorities, this public fire commission has reviewed an informal complaint and have directed complaints, complained to address several concerns with the fire chief and or the village administrator. And the fire chief will be addressing the complaint matter at the fire chief administrative level. As well, actually, that's going on going forward. We'll take that on. I think we should find out if there's some things that managerial, that's a process can be resolved. The other thing is the annual tier two report. This is an annual report that needs to be filed with Wisconsin Emergency Management for Industries that maybe be a major hazard operation in the community. What enters at this time has ERCO and the report has not been filed for 2019. And it's due in March 1st, so record documents will be completed to meet the deadline. I just wanted to make sure you're aware that it's came in. We're not, we're not filing it up to the curs. The other thing is I'm coming into the town of Grand Rapids, they call it ETC, Exeter, Exeter, Exeter zoning. Tom's request approval of, it's called a Grand Pines, first edition plastic approved. But this matter will be brought for the next pit committee agenda and then they'll be recommended to come to the board. It's very about process that you've done in the past, but I don't know if you had to be at the last time, so. And the other thing, Public Administrator Associate LLC audit, I call it part, PAA's tier, first tier recommendation be identified, prioritized, and set timeframe for implementation. Other than that, you've been honest, there were certain tiers that we need, that's going to be occurring. I need to work on those and start bringing back to the, to the committee structure and back to the board. One already completed actions, administrative job description announces being acquired. The other PAA, it's the second tier recommendation. It was review alternative building inspection process and potential service alternative. That too is an export, normal building inspection for 2020. It has been identified and we are working on reviewing alternative building inspection process. Report, myself and the Public Works Supervisor will be bringing proposals to, it's going to be a site committee next meeting. That was brought up earlier. One thing that I'm going to be working on, I need to work on this. It'll help me and a lot of my staff work on this, is committee responsibilities. Myself, the village president, the committee chair will need to develop a policy and procedures and what matters will be addressed for each standing committee. It's very hard for me to see and my staff, what work goes where. And I think we need to put it in writing.
It is in writing.
I have it somewhere.
It simply says that if there's two or more things, basically boils down to the village president will decide which committee to assign it to.
I'm trying to get a little more detail because stuff comes in.
You're looking at the next level of where A, B, and C?
Yes.
I just wanted to let you know there is something writing already. But you want to expand on it?
I'd like to expand on it because I think it's going to be much helpful for us as a staff. And actually runs smooth with committee structure.
Sounds like a plan.
Also on the back, attorney retired, pretend fees, our firm is reducing annual fee from 2020 from $2,000 a month to $1,500 a month. We thought, there also is going to be coming forward as being, the public works supervisor will be recommending 10 hour workday to CIRC for Memorial Day, Labor Day that's coming up to CIRC. And I'd like to be aware of that, you know, it's just a proposal. And of course, the temporary summer help was already discussed. I wanted to, you know, I'm doing this, trying to get things down so I can get my organization planning. What I need to do with my staff and also. get my organization plan together, what I need to do with my staff, and also cooperate to keep the article in form, what's going on.
10-hour days are long overdue.
And I think the counties do that quite extensively. So, that's something that...
You know, with the timeframe, Ben picked out during the summer months, it's ideal.
It's very similar to, I've seen county do it all over. Personal favor.
I will expect to see some sort of fiscal tag on that, because I don't know what we have budgeted for that, but that's gonna be 10 hours, a time and a half.
No. But if I'm gonna take it, when I get done, like...
Is this four days a week?
Four days a week.
Oh.
I mean, I wanted to know, that's how they propose it. I think they propose it that way.
Three days, something like that, someone will have to work.
All right.
Yeah, there's extra day of call stuff.
Your finance, your, or be there on call.
Process, or a weekend, that has to be discussed. Okay.
Diane had a good point, too, about that. You know, it's a three-day weekend now, so that's a...
More overtime.
But that, that's your fiscal, that's where you gotta look at the fiscal, though. That's where that, unfortunately.
And what's the basis for Lush Paul reducing their fees?
Uh, the biggest thing is the, oh, we got Diane.
I had suggested it to them, because we had an over $5,000 credit this last time.
Okay, so we're paying them a retainer, and then using it on the hourly basis. And if it's left over, then we have credit.
Quarterly, they'll bill us if you, yeah. We ended up with the over $5,000 credit.
Okay. Well, we're being a little more prudent, apparently, with our use of legal services.
Well, we, we don't have the DONTAR hearings anymore, that's all.
Yeah.
It's in a different area.
What's that, too?
This is in a different area.
Well, so the DONTAR is, they're continuing their efforts to be a good neighbor. Did I say that out loud? I'm sorry.
Okay. That it, Dwayne?
Thank you very much. If you have any questions.
Okay, Court Treacher? Okay, nothing to report. Trustees' comments?
I'm just gonna put a reminder out there that next month, we're gonna dedicate this building, and at 6:30, I think you've invited Marshall to be here. So, we're, it's gonna be, I don't know, punch and cookies, cheese, crackers.
On the board.
It'll be our next board. So, at 6:30, we're gonna dedicate the building. I think we're gonna unveil the sign outside, and then whatever words our president...
That's coming from the illustrious...
We're gonna retail.
The interim administrator wants to do that, so he can climb up on the roof with all the ice, and he can let go.
And hang it.
Yes.
Okay.
You're the one that brought it up, and I heard you.
If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. Marshall, but anyway, so everybody needs to be here at 6:30.
Please, that'd be nice.
No?
I did talk to Marshall. I did talk to Marshall, please.
I hope you don't confuse him.
Well, we worked hard on it.
Well, that'll be the 10th.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you, Sue. Committee calendar. Start off with the CIRK, one week from tonight, February 18th, 5:00, in the committee room of the Marshall Beeler Center. The 25th, the PIT committee, 5:00, in the committee room of the Marshall Beeler Center. I think I said February 25th. And that night, Betsy, you will be filling in for John, and then Dana or Eric, you guys will have to decide who will chair that meeting. March 2nd will be, the Monday will be the next Police and Fire Commission meeting, also here in the committee room. Then, the Public Safety Committee will meet on Wednesday, March 4th, once again, here, the committee room. Is there any reason why I was changing it?
I get, won't be back until the next day.
Oh, okay.
5:00.
All at 5:00. The PFC meeting's 5:30, by the way, I forgot to mention that. Then, on the 5th, Thursday, will be at 5:00, will be the Finance and Human Resource Committee.
What's the date on that?
The 5th, Thursday.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then the board meeting will be on Tuesday, March 10th, here in the boardroom, and it will begin with the social at 6:30, for the dedication of the Marshall Beeler Center officially, and then followed at 7:00, by the March board meeting. Everyone entertain a motion to adjourn?
Owe.
Second.
Stand adjourned.